The Brattleboro Planning Commission for Monday, December 5th is called to order. First order of business is to approve the minutes of November 7th. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I...
You would, huh?
Yeah. I approve that we approve the minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Alright. Okay. I just have this little announcement about the skate park, which is a town committee. There's a fundraiser tomorrow at Elliott Street Fish and Chips. And 60% of the proceeds go to the skate park. Well, we just finished the permits that were required, and so now we will be fundraising, and I think we need a, I'd say about $150,000.
Wow.
So...
That's a lot of fish.
That'll take a good, a big chunk out of that, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
By when? Is there like a... I mean, is it...
When we get the money, then we'll build the skate park?
But there's no like timing out of permits or anything?
No, I mean, well, yeah, they do time out, but they could be re...
Renewed.
Renewed. But I'm thinking, you know, we'll have a full court press, so it'll be soon. Because all the other impediments, and you know, there's been so many for them. Okay. Public comments, hearing none. We'll move on to legal update. Sue?
Sorry.
It's alright.
We've got a dead machine.
Want to use my phone?
Um, no, it's okay. We've got that, and I'll just take yours.
Okay.
So, we put this on the agenda because, actually, the November Vermont Planners Association meeting kind of focused on some of the new legal cases and decisions that involve planning. So, there's two, two kind of from the state and that we'll talk about, and one that was a US Supreme Court from last summer, but it's kind of starting to shake out a little bit, I guess. And we're just bringing it up as kind of education, information, things to consider, and we'll kind of see that as we weave through it. So, the first one is the BMN, B and M Realty, Queche Highlands case, that went before the Vermont Supreme Court. And this was, and if you read some of the background materials, you'll get a little bit about it, but essentially, there was a private developer that wanted to build near exit, like basically right off of Exit 1 on 89. It's in Queche, in the town of Hartford. And it was a development of more than 100,000 square feet of office, retail, and residential in 10 buildings on 168 acres. It was, the town permitted it. That decision was appealed by the Regional Planning Commission, so there's 10 regional planning commissions in Vermont. Towns have town plans, they have regional plans. They appealed the decision because they said that this was a development of regional impact, and therefore, they didn't agree with the decision. Essentially, their regional plan said that if you were having commercial development, it needed to be in a designated downtown, a village center, or in a growth center area. And they had that mapped out in their regional plan. And this development was outside those areas. And furthermore, it was along an interstate, or next to an interstate interchange, which the state has kind of been trying to promote developing downtowns and not interstate interchange.
Just interstate.
I don't know. I don't know if it was, probably.
And it was in Hartford, so it was approved by Hartford?
Hartford.
Hartford, okay, okay.
Yeah. It's Queche. Queche is one of the...
A subset.
Yeah. Village of Queche in the town of Hartford, or something like that. So, yeah, they appealed it, saying that it, their regional plan prohibited principal retail establishments from being anywhere other than downtowns, village centers, or growth centers. So, that was heard by the environmental court, and the environmental court ruled in favor of the permit being issued, because the judge had said, "Well, we don't really know, this is not primarily retail. You haven't defined what primarily retail is, and the majority of this development's going to be residential." So, they upheld the permit. Two Rivers then appealed it to the Vermont Supreme Court, and at that point, there were a couple of other people that, or groups that supported their cause. There was Vermont Natural Resource Council, Preservation Trust of Vermont, several of the regional planning commissions, I think, wrote briefs to the court as well. And basically, that the Supreme Court decision overruled the lower court and ruled in favor of the regional planning commission, saying that their regional plan, that this development did have regional impact, and that their plan was unambiguous and clear about where...
The regional plan was unambiguous.
Right. And so, it didn't matter what the town plan said, it didn't matter what the local regulations were. The regional plan kind of trumped them.
Because it was sprawl?
Because it, because they were very clear when they said that primarily retail establishments must be located in downtowns, village centers. I mean, so you could infer that it's sprawl, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, basically, what the court was saying is that you have to, well, they're saying if a regional plan is clear and has mandatory language, that it can overrule any local regulations, or even any town plan, when it comes to a development of regional impact. So, it got us thinking, okay, Brattleboro, I mean, a lot of our development does have a regional impact, not everything. But we, you know, the Supreme Court basically affirmed kind of some power from regional planning commissions, and we want to make sure that maybe what's in the Wyndham Regional Commission plan, or at least anything moving forward, that, you know, has been fully vetted by the town, and, you know, we're in agreement, or that we voice our disagreements.
We should probably have like a whole session reviewing the Wyndham Regional Plan, see what it says. Because there could be some screwy things in it.
Yeah. We should probably at least take a look at it. For me, this actually leads into the next kind of case, but I'll stop it there to see if you have any questions. It also gets into the power of regional plans and even town plans, that if you want it to be enforceable, it needs to be clear. And when we wrote our town plan, I think you came on in that process.
Oh, yeah, I was, I was quite concerned, even at the regional meeting that we went to last week, that we should revisit the town plan, because there were so many things that when we were writing the plan, we said, you know, we should, we should, you know, we should do this, and it was watered down to, it is suggested or recommended, because I think the select board felt that until the zoning was set, that it hadn't been decided. But now that it's been decided, these various matters, we can go back to the town plan and put more forceful language in, because...
Because courts look at the town...
Because courts look at the plan.
Courts look at the plans over the zoning, in most, in a lot of cases.
Because the select board was really adamant that they didn't want to be so forceful in their language at that time, but I think that's the only force that the town plan has, is to be clear and specific.
And does it, has it been more the courts said it's a more specific plan? There's a difference? Is the one they pay the most attention to? Or is it the one that is more relevant to the development, like its regional developments, the regional plan, this town one's town plan?
I think, I think that is the case. Because this was such a large development for that region, I think the regional plan probably did, came into effect. And then, you had an instance where the, probably the town plan was silent, even though it got local permits, went through their DRB and all that. The Regional Planning Commission did have standing, because such a big development. And yeah, I mean, it's, it's interesting in Vermont, because any other state that I know of, if you have a town plan or a master plan, it's supposed to be visionary. You know, this is what we want to be in 20 years, or, you know, the direction that we're going. In Vermont, because of Act 250, they actually do have some sort of regulatory role, so it's kind of this tension, often where planners want to make the language in the town plan stronger and more prescriptive. And, you know, when it gets to be adopted, it's a concern, because it's such a big document, it covers so many things, that, you know, I think the select board often feels like, well, you know, we don't know exactly how it's going to be implemented. That's what land use regulations are for, and that's, that's true. So, a lot of times, they're more comfortable walking it back until this, you know, Planning Commission has really dived into the certain aspect. So, yeah, that...
And the select board gets to vote on that as well, so it's really, get down to the nitty gritty the second time around.
So, that, that was a decision that came out, I think, mid-October, so that's a fairly new one. The Acts 174 overview, that's the next one, and that's, I think I talked about it at the September meeting. This is the state's enhanced energy planning kind of law, I guess. I would say, so they, they just enacted standards, so...
It ends up really being the same type of issue about the specificity of the master plan versus the state and regional plans.
Yeah. So, you've seen some different renewable energy proposals come through, where the Planning Commission and the select board and the town get a chance to, you know, provide input. But honestly, when you get to the state regulatory, and that's, that's Section 248, that's kind of the law that governs permitting these, they don't give a lot of weight to what a town plan has to say. I mean, they're supposed to pay attention to it, but it can, if, you know, if there's some other reason, they, if the, if the state has good cause to find otherwise, which is really broad language, they can, you know, can and will set aside whatever a town plan says. So, this Act 174 puts out this process by where a town can elevate their plan standing to get substantial deference. And that is basically where the Public Service Board would apply a specific land use measure or conservation measure or policy, as it's written. Basically, you know, outweighing any other state objective. But in order to get that, you have to go through this enhanced energy planning. And essentially, what it means is, the state has a comprehensive energy plan, the regional planning commissions will have a plan that kind of implements that and is in line with that, and then the town will also have that if we undertake this energy planning, enhanced energy planning. Makes me uncomfortable, because that seems very top-down.
Not only top-down, but the state plan is so unrealistic and ambitious, that, you know, we're kind of topping down something that's not really achievable. Especially about the roads. Did they make any findings about the highways?
No. Not, I didn't back up that plan.
Yeah.
So, originally, when this law was being discussed, we thought it was just going to be about the setting of renewables, so solar, hydro, wind, that kind of thing. But when the act came out, or when the, when the standards came out, it's much broader. It has to do with energy, heating, transportation, renewables, non-renewables, land use, which we address anyway, decisions that we make with land use. So, it's much broader, and there's a lot of standards that would need to be met. And basically, there's a couple of components. If we wanted to undertake this enhanced energy planning, there would be analysis. We'd have to set targets, we'd have to have pathways, which pathways, I think, are the implementation. So, it's a lot like we do a town plan now, but just some different language. And then we would have to undertake mapping. And the mapping would have to identify areas that are both suitable and unsuitable for different energy, renewable energy sources. And, you know, we have to make sure everything's consistent with all other state planning policies, as well as internally consistent in a town plan. And, you know, I think our feeling at this point, the staff's feeling is, is this is so new, and we're a little unsure of it, and it, we're not sure that it's worth, you know, the cost-benefit, if it's worth necessarily going through it all. I think we're in a little bit of wait-and-see, and several other towns, I think, are in the same position elsewhere in the state from planners we've spoke to. But then, if you think back to that previous part, the case we just spoke about, about regional plans, you know, having a lot of power if they are written clearly, it's like, well, even if we don't do our own energy planning, we kind of have to go through the process to make sure that what Wyndham Regional Commission puts in their plan, that we feel that's appropriate.
Because they're putting things in their plan about us.
Right, because we're in the region.
Would the partnership, would like that suffice, right? So, ostensibly, Wyndham Regional Commission, if they have the plan, would have kind of standing? I forgot the language you used.
Substantial deference.
Right. So, would that be a situation where you just want to work with the Regional Planning Commission to make sure that it, that their plan makes sense for us, as opposed to doing a whole separate process?
It could be, but I don't have a lot of, we would have to be diligent, and really get into it, to make sure that they have our best interests in mind. Because I think they have a ten, they, they view us as, you know, the regional center among all these small towns, and that is good and bad.
And when you think about some of the infrastructure needed for some of the renewable, I mean, it's probably going to be, you know, where distribution lines, and where can you easily access it? And, so, I mean, we might look at their work, you know, I think we, at least we need to go through the mapping exercise on our own and be prepared. I mean, because even if we don't agree, we need to be in a position to, you know, when they do outreach for their own energy plan, we need, we want to be prepared, I think, to, to be involved in that. And look out for it.
Like, one of the things that the state focuses on is transportation, and reducing transportation, you know, vehicle miles traveled, I suppose. And to me, I think that that applies in the face of economic development goals, too. You know, if we have a, if we have 91 going through our town, we want tourists to come to Vermont, are we going to get slammed with the mileage on the highways and tourists coming to our town, which is at cross purposes to economic development?
And then, I think, within it, I mean, there's certain things that the town can do. I think Brattleboro has been pretty active on energy efficiency, and, you know, all of that, but there are some things that, you know, people can make their own choices. It's not really an area of government to be in. So, it is, again, these standards came out in February, sorry, November, so it's kind of new. Wyndham Regional Commission is having a meeting on December 7th, at 7 o'clock at the Graduate Center, where they will be presenting an overview of it, and also how towns can, you know, achieve this substantial deference. What we learned at the conference is that there was a pilot program where three regional commissions have done their energy plans. Wyndham Regional Commission was not one of them, but they're, I guess, slated, all the rest of the regional commissions are supposed to have their plans done by the end of July, so...
And they, they received funding, and they've begun that work.
And there's a couple of online dashboard-type resources where you can pull up some preliminary mapping and, of lines and stuff, so I think that, that's definitely something we'll be looking at the new year. Probably going through maps and trying to identify areas we think are suitable for Brattleboro and are unsuitable. So, that's Act 174. Any questions?
Nah, got that.
Piece of cake.
Piece of cake.
And then, the last one is signs. This was a Vermont, sorry, US Supreme Court decision from, what, 2015? I think it was July of 2015. And I think this is a pretty good overview. I sent it in the package. The takeaway for me for it is, basically, if you have to read the sign, if you have to read the content of the sign to see if it meets your, complies with your regulations, or, you know, if you can issue a permit, then that's not okay. So, the Supreme Court decision, I think, primarily dealt with temporary signs, so like garage sale, or there's a sale going on, or grand opening, or, you know, maybe political signs. It's not so clear on permanent signs, but...
I'm still wrestling with, if you have to read what the content of the sign says, then that's not good.
Meaning, they're making a decision that people can't make, they can't make a prohibitory decision on a sign based on the content of it?
Exactly.
Is the upshot, right?
Oh, so it's like a First Amendment thing?
Right, so it has to be about the...
Clarence Thomas, right?
Placement, or the size, or the...
Did you read it?
What?
I said Clarence Thomas, I think, were the, the decision.
Decision.
I was kind of surprised by that. Thought he didn't...
Well, I guess he can write.
Yes, I'm sure he can. Yeah, but you're right. It's a First Amendment, then.
Okay, now I understand.
Thank you.
So, did we, so is that an issue?
It is an issue in our sign. I think there's a couple, there's a couple areas that I pick out that are a little bit of a concern. So, we do have, we have some special use signs, and this is what, an area that was not clear in the decision, so they're permanent signs, like gas stations or theaters, which we allow more signage. We have kind of a pretty open one, that if it's a municipal use or government use, that it could, you can also get an increase in the sign area. So, I think those are a bit potentially problematic. More, more clear to the Vermont, to the Supreme Court decision is, we have several exemptions of signs that...
Are based on content?
Are based on content. For-sale signs, grand opening flags. And so, this actually gives a suggestion...
Well, aren't they temporary signs?
Yes, but this specifically deals with the temporary sign. That's what it's most clear on. They're basically, one of the suggestions in here is that, basically, treat all yard signs as residential district signs. Treat all grand opening, special business, you know, any, any of those special business signs as temporary business signs, so kind of broaden it, is one of the recommendations in here.
So, would that lead to you examining the zoning and suggesting changes to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Would we have to get into defining what is temporary or what isn't?
Um...
So, it's like, you said temporary sign, I can do everybody on it, as big as I want, which would have to be...
We do have temporary signs, we do allow permits for temporary signs, so I think that we probably have a decent, yeah, there's probably a decent definition. I don't think we're in bad shape, but because I think with the rewrite of our regulations, it is actually good, because we have signs for wall signs and projecting signs, so we're not really looking too much at content. And you're still able to, we do have temporary signs to advertise openings, sales, or similar special events.
So, this is something, you, I think last month, we said that you're kind of keeping track, like, you have things that have come out that needed to be changed?
Yep.
So, this would be just added to that list?
This is on the list.
Okay, but, alright, so then we would sort of get to that in the process of like updating the other changes?
Yeah. But just giving you some background. I don't think it's, it's not too bad, so... Yeah, so those are kind of the decisions that we were looking at, kind of impacting some work of a nature. But in terms of the sign, you can still focus on the structure, so size, materials, lighting, portability, all of that is okay. It's just the content.
Next, land use regulation update.
So, a couple of things here. Maybe I can, we can either go through, I had started working on a table, and I was out some last week, and Rod was out some last week, and we were going to go over it today, and that didn't happen. So, I can walk through some of the easy ones for you that we had already discussed. I can throw some things out there and let you know what I'm kind of wrestling with.
It's up to you. If you want to wait until it's finished...
Yeah, what do you think's most useful for your process?
Um, probably waiting until it's closer to finished.
Okay.
Because I think some of them, we'd like to probably be on the same page as staff as to recommending a change.
And is this, so, does that mean we would need to move up the, the joint meeting with the DRB, or would we still be doing that January meeting?
No, we're still doing the January, that was the next thing to talk about with that. I did reach out to James Volante, who is the chair, and he said he thought that sounded good, and he liked the idea. He wanted to kind of pull the members as to their availability in the beginning of January. The first meeting in January would be January 2nd, and that's a holiday, so that's out.
January 2nd?
Yeah, because New Year's is the first, so we would get the second.
New Year's is Sunday.
Yeah. Yep. So, that would mean, okay, the 4th is typically the Wednesday that we would meet. We're kind of feeling like it's still like post-holiday.
The 4th is the DRB meeting, you mean?
No, no, where, yeah, where we would have a joint meeting. So, Rod and I were proposing, what about the 9th? It's the second Monday of that month.
I will be in Mexico, unfortunately.
Unfortunately? I don't know about that.
Well, good for you.
That's the wrong adjective to use.
Okay.
Not adjective, that's not an adjective.
It's probably fine. So, that would be our January meeting?
Yeah, is that doable for you?
Yep. Do you need a quorum for that meeting, or does a quorum count as, based on the number of members from both?
No, it would be each board having a quorum.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Is it January 9th?
Mm-hmm.
And it's six?
That would be okay for you.
Since it's our meeting.
At six, yeah, was what we would try for. And I can check and see if Casey can make it, and then I was going to throw that out to James as the date.
That sounds good.
And you'll be, hopefully, having a good time? Leisure, hope?
Yes.
I don't know, even work in Mexico could be interesting, so...
I hope, but I think I'll be doing it anywhere. Reading a lot of...
Nice. Okay, so we'll try for the 9th.
Should we do that? We would not have...
That'd be our meeting for the month.
That'd be our meeting.
Yeah, and so if we, and I'll get you a schedule for 2017, Rita's working on those. You can email those out. Um, but yeah, it would be the only meeting. If you have a copy of the land use regulations, it would be good to bring, but I'll be in contact with you about that, because this list might grow.
The only problem with that is that we won't have time to go over this and have our own thoughts about changing the regulations before we meet with them. Are we just going to be in a listening mode and say thank you very much and then in the February meeting, we'll discuss what they suggested and this?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Um, but I'm not sure if it's, you know, I think we can be beyond a little bit of a listening.
Yeah, I mean, we discuss it. Yeah, no, but I mean that we won't bring, we won't be bringing up our issues.
Right.
We'll just be listening and discussing their issues.
And, you know, I can even send this out, we'll get it in better, better shape over this month and send it out. It wouldn't surprise me if some of the things on this list, uh, wouldn't show up there. Like, there's some concerns about building footprints in certain districts, like the mixed-use district.
Well, so could it be more of like a work, if we're having a joint meeting, I mean, couldn't it be just more of a working meeting where, where after this is cleaned up, it's shared with both boards?
It would be shared with both. There's the, the little separation of power thing, though, where they are not the policymakers.
Okay.
So they, sometimes in the past, the DRB has not wanted to be in that kind of position, so, um, I think it's, because they work with it, we want their input.
Okay, so it's really us looking sort of at two pieces, two sets of data, right? The information from them and then what you've gleaned from the process.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can get a sense for James, too. I mean, if they only need to come for an hour and then, you know, we spend a half an hour talking to the Planning Commission after or whatever.
Okay.
That's okay, too. But I, you know, if you're interested in seeing what's on here, I think I'd shared the list the last time. Um, we dropped some off, uh, based on Brian and I talking and kind of clarifying some things, Brian's the zoning administrator, so, um, I can share it, but, so it's no surprise when you get it.
Yeah. I'm going to see it and fancy writing it down if you're ready.
Yeah, okay. And, um, should we move on and...
Yes, please.
Soon. Uh, this went through the feeder a little bit funny. Take one and this is, oh, sorry. Just going to get it over. So this has to do with the downtown master plan. There is kind of a, there's a schedule at the bottom, but admittedly, we think it's aggressive and probably going to need some tweaking. So I was, we were trying to think of the master plan, what did we need for it, what can the phases be? So the first one, as I've laid out here, would kind of be a data collection, that's the background and research. So we do the inventory of downtown buildings. Some of this would be really easy to collect, others would be a little bit, take a little bit longer. If we are successful in getting a municipal planning grant to do a parking study, uh, part of that will be an in, parking utilization inventory that Planning Commission or staff will be involved with. It's not just going to be the consultant, the way that we have it figured out. An H&amp;H is a hydraulic and hydrologic study. It has to deal with, uh, the floodplain areas and the depth and I think height of the water. That's something we wanted to pursue, uh, but there's some funding challenges with that that have cropped up, so that, that may not pan out. That would be informative of, there's several buildings in the downtown, or would inform that, the fact that there's several buildings in the downtown that are in the floodway. You might recall the Arch Bill, Arch Street Building, actually the Latchess, Wilder, Wilder, not Latchess, I'm sorry, the Wilder Building. So there are some areas where we have residential in the floodway and our current zoning prohibits that, and so it might be something we want to take a look at and having that scientific data and what it could tell us could be useful for that, so we'd like to try to pursue that. Just understanding our infrastructure, the water sewer, stormwater, where the, where the issues, um, and then looking at previous studies, um, some of which Liz may have brought to mind.
Oh, yeah, do you want to see this now?
Yeah.
Here, we have a retail snapshot for Brattleboro.
Yeah, that's definitely one that's on our list.
Oh, this is, oh, probably not. Living in harmony with streams, enhanced transit services in Brattleboro.
Oh, yeah.
Walking down memory lane, rethinking Brattleboro's commercial districts.
This was a project that the Planning Commission did back in 2011. Um, it doesn't, it doesn't really get into the downtown. I think we acknowledge in this plan that it, we need a downtown master plan, but there might be some interesting kind of market trends and stuff in the...
Because I, yeah, I think that it focused on the outlying commercial areas.
Yep.
Then here's the arts atlas. And then these, oh, using Vermont's past to build a better future.
Never seen that.
Interesting.
Yeah. You're rocking, rocking and rolling here.
Don't quiz me on them. Preparing for the next flood. And then these two about active living workshop.
Yeah, this study area was outside of the downtown, so I'm not sure how much that one will apply. There might be some things in there.
True, yes. But this one and this transit one looked good to me.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, those two are definitely, but some of the others might have some interesting and relevant pieces as well. So those are the kind of studies that we'll be taking a look at to see what, there's some other housing studies that we've seen. I know Wyndham Windsor Housing Trust has done some studies that might have some relevance. Um, so the schedule, I mean, I basically have a four-month collection of data and that's, that's probably an area that might be a little bit short, especially the parking utilization. If we get that grant, that really conceivably might not get going until the spring by the time we go through a procurement to get a consultant.
I would imagine that, I mean, are you considering us starting this now in December?
I'm considering starting it now, I mean, staff.
Great.
Yeah, staff, starting to do work.
Mm-hmm.
Pulling the information together. And then once we have the information, then we kind of go out with an outreach and education campaign, um, a little bit of both, like here's the project, you know, get, get some feedback.
Is there a history component that you need to consider in the background of research?
History?
I don't know.
I think probably more like historic district, kind of historic resources. I wouldn't say necessarily straight history of how downtown developed or anything like that. How are you thinking of it?
I'm thinking of it in terms of like a master plan, right? Sort of like starting from like a complete understanding of like the historical uses of down, you know, it's like if you're sort of planning out, it might actually be nice to do some callback, right? And also just, there's probably consistencies over time about how things have been used or, I don't know. It's, it's my arts brain is pulling this up, not my planner brain.
No, I hear what you're saying. It's not uncommon for a master plan to kind of start off with a historical kind of background. I think it's more of a style choice. I mean, I think if there, I think...
I think it's a good way to show how there's been change over time and the reasons for that change, like, you know, people, starting with, people used to take the train.
Yeah.
More often, you know.
Are you doing like a trend, trends that we're having, you know, interchanges, which is why we justify the line out in this way?
Yeah, kind of. I mean, I'm just thinking of like context for how we got, how we get here and where we want to go, what we want to keep and what we didn't keep and why we didn't keep it. Yeah, anyway, whatever.
Sounds good.
Well, I think because in my mind, we're looking at two areas actually of change, the Whitestone Quarter and the waterfront on Depot, that, that context and that, you know, is relevant, for sure. Um, so...
So really the downtown is like a third front? Because it's not the Whitestone or the waterfront.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All right, sorry. So then phase two, walking tours.
And I'd kind of been planning that over the spring, summer months. Um, I don't know, that, you know, if you think about what we did for zoning, we actually compressed it into, you know, two one-week periods, so, you know, doesn't, maybe the data collection goes longer and we try to target.
Yeah, I mean, you'll have to have phase one in sufficient shape to have a presentation for phase two.
Right. And then the plan development, um, that's really kind of, um, the two new pieces that we see for the, I mean, beyond just writing an entire plan, uh, we have some existing components that we feel like we'll pull from, including the Whitestone Quarter, where, you know, but we do need to create a parking study and we need to create a conceptual plan for the waterfront. I called it the lower downtown here. So we're looking at Arch Street to Depot Street. And I've talked about it before, we have the funding through our EPA Brownfields grant to do that. There's just some challenges with land ownership and when's the right time to do it. But that's something we really want to get on, but that'll be a new kind of piece that will then kind of come into the, to the plan, the master plan. Project identification, I guess that's picking off kind of the actual, what are projects that we see within the downtown, so, you know, basically we'll have the plan written. It kind of moves us, I think, towards the implementation part of, um, the master plan and then there is the implementation plan. And then phase four is basically putting it out there to the public, getting feedback and then going through the adoption process.
Is this the type of plan that you think will lead to zoning changes or funding to do certain initiatives?
I think funding to do initiatives.
That's the goal.
Yeah, um, I think when we have to do the next town plan update, it could be the basis of zoning changes, but I think that, I don't think we'll do that and then do a whole, you know, zoning update.
Yeah, just was more thinking about what the ultimate outcome would be.
Yeah. Okay. So that's where we're at with that. Any thoughts on the, what might need to be done? Any additional thoughts or any thoughts on the timeline?
Are we thinking for the parking study, we're thinking about the present, but in terms of like a post-car future?
No, I don't think we're, we weren't planning, but we can talk about that, to think about a post-car future, um, but it will take into account, you know, a couple potential development scenarios, you know? If the waterfront is developed differently, what does that mean for parking?
With the new bridge and whatnot.
If we decide to put a trolley between here and the Chelsea Road liner.
That's nice. You're still in that history bit.
No, I was just thinking of like bicycle, you know, like if everyone started riding bikes, like where, or...
Well, Rod and I have talked about having bike parking be a...
Horses. Maybe horses.
Move your horse to your house. I think it will take into account some bicycle parking and that kind of thing. We hadn't envisioned anything beyond that.
Any other comments? This is to get my brain going. I'm like, gray water capture systems, you know, distribute the heat.
Last chance for your brain, because we were about to adjourn.
Yeah, okay.
If no one has any more comments about the downtown mission.
I hope to give you more work in the new year.
Yeah, we're looking forward to it.
It's okay.
Yeah.
I want to make good use of your time.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, thank you both very much.